Meeting is in order. Shall I call the roll?
Sure, you can, or I can call it.
Note that we're all here.
Whatever your preference. Ms. Taylor?
I'm here.
Mr. Clemens?
Here.
Mr. Flanagan?
Here.
Mr. Seario?
Here.
Mr. Fitzsimmons, present. All members are present. Has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
Will we approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, where is the approval of the minutes? Minutes here.
We have not, well, I think we're going to come to that in the course of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
It's an apt question. We haven't, we're a little behind on the minutes than the last time I inquired about them. The director explained that staffing pressures have made it difficult to keep up with the normal production of them.
All of a sudden, it's like, wow, that's missed.
Yeah, I think, so let's address that when we get to maybe other business, if that's, if that seemed right. Election of officers. Per the bylaws, the commission will elect a chairman, a vice chairman, a parliamentarian, and a secretary. And I'd like to kick things off by nominating Mr. Flanagan for the position of chairman. Mr. Flanagan joined the commission a year after I did. He has been a conscientious contributor of the highest integrity during the eight years, or the seven years that we've served together. He's well-known in the town, and he has a long history, a long record of public service in general. And I think it's 20 years now on the Parking Commission for, Parking Authority, for example. Or is it 25?
Twenty. It only seems like 25.
So, he's more than demonstrated his reliability and his integrity, and I would be honored to serve under his chairmanship.
I'd second that nomination.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I accept the nomination.
Change these?
Okay, so we'll probably just...
Do you want to...
Get in the center chair, the off-center chair.
I'll see.
Gosh, what he was acting, he just acted right from here.
It's different now.
All the pomp and circumstance.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. That was a glowing recommendation, and I'm honored to be chair of the Planning Commission for this calendar year.
Very well deserved.
All right, so we need to move on to the elective vice chairman. Is there a nomination for anyone to be vice chair?
A question first. Can member of the council be an officer?
I don't think so.
Yeah, you're a real member of this commission.
Yeah.
You're not a liaison, so to be chairperson.
I didn't realize that. I never was before, as well. I guess I haven't as a member of council, so didn't realize.
So, yes, is the short answer.
I'd like to nominate Megan, if that's okay, be vice chair. You've been there before.
I can second that.
Do you accept the nomination?
Sure, if I'm able.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. Move on to nominating the parliamentarian.
I believe that's usually our...
Yeah, this serving, typically. I nominated James Clemens to be the parliamentarian.
Sorry?
Do you accept the nomination?
Sure.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. And then, lastly, nominations for the secretary. Typically, this would be staff.
Yeah, that's where I was going. I was, I had it backwards.
Staff, down.
Right.
So whoever he selects, at each meeting.
Your absence.
Somebody from the planning director.
Staff will be secretary. Very good. Whoops, that was probably for the public hearing, sorry. All right, moving on to comments and correspondence from citizens, visitors, and delegations in the audience, and items not on the agenda.
Hello, Jeffrey Mitchell, South Blue Ridge Avenue. Just wanted to take a moment and say what an honor it was to serve with everybody here. I really enjoyed our deliberations, the discussions, the learning, but the collaborative nature of how our business got done, and the incredible number of unanimous votes that we cast together. It really spoke well of everybody bringing their expertise, and also wanted to welcome James back to the position. Just a moment to say thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, is there anyone else who would like to speak on items not on the agenda? All right, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Hopwell?
No, Mr. Chairman, no unfinished business this month.
All right, the new business is a public hearing to allow the commission to gather information, what, anyway, a public hearing, CUP 421-2023, conditional use permit for accessory dwelling unit.
Good evening, everyone. So, we did a introduction of the case at the last work session, but for the benefit of those who weren't there, I'll run back through what I presented last time, as well as some of the follow-up items that came out of that meeting. So, CUP 4221-2023, it's a request for an accessory dwelling unit at 1822 Orange Road. This is a .33 acre parcel, zoned R2, the medium-density residential district. So, the applicant is requesting to construct a 989-square-foot, single-story accessory dwelling unit in the rear yard of the property. This proposed living area would be part of a larger structure, which would include a 460-square-foot garage. On this slide, you can see a proposed elevation of the ADU. The applicant has noted that the placement of the windows and doors may change slightly, and the color is not yet determined, but the overall design would be based on this. So, as you all know, there are a number of requirements specific to ADUs, so the applicant provided an application packet, which has now been updated to address some of the questions that came up at the last meeting. So firstly, you'll see on this slide that the layout plan has been updated, in addition to showing the separation between the property, the house on this property and the one next door. They've also added the property line, which, as you can see, most of the area between the two lies on the 1822 side. They've also shown the nine-foot-wide drive aisle extending to the ADU, and they've shown the reduction of that parking area in front of the main house. So, there are stipulations for maximum size and number of rooms in the structure, those being the ADU cannot exceed 1,000 square feet. With attached structures such as this one, we require that there be no interior connection between the garage and the proposed ADU. So, at the last meeting, there had been a question raised as far as fire separation, what would come into play. I was able to talk with the building official. So, the current building code treats detached accessory dwelling units the same as just a standard, single-family dwelling. So, that requirement would be, let's see, at least a half-inch of gypsum board or equivalent applied on the garage side for the fire separation. And again, on the right side of this slide, you can see the, a closer look at the interior layout, where they've got the two bedrooms, the open family area, the kitchen, and bathroom. So, this slide, we kind of looked at closely the last time, as far as, originally, this area had been presented for the off-street parking, and then we had kind of looked into that code requirement that no more than 25% of the front yard can be devoted to parking area. So, again, as you saw on this layout plan, the parking area's been shown as reduced to 25%, and we've also written that in as a condition of approval. So, assuming this were to be approved, that that would be something we would be following up on before final approval of the accessory dwelling.
Sorry, the 25% is the green space?
So, it would be 75% green space, 25% parking. Then there's the requirement for the architectural compatibility with surrounding development. So, there's a bit of variety to the zoning and land uses in the neighborhood here. This picture shows the homes closest to the ADU. These are 1.5-story, sort of Cape Cod-style homes. In terms of scale and height, the square footage is roughly comparable. You've got the 980 for the ADU. These homes all range between the 8 and 950 square foot mark on the first floor. So, let's see. Along those same lines, at the request of a couple of commissioners, I've added this image. I also gave you all a copy showing the, just a footprint of what the proposed unit would look like. You've got the living space outlined in blue, the garage area in red, and then you can see the footprints of the other homes in the neighborhood. So, one thing I would sort of note here, in terms of the scale, is, so, we've got the 1,000-square-foot limit on the accessory dwelling. There's not necessarily a similar limit on just an accessory structure, so there would be nothing to stop someone from building a larger-than-compatible garage in this rear yard. But I just wanted to make that distinction, that we're not necessarily able to dictate the size of the garage so much as just that accessory dwelling unit, which is being applied for.
Okay, question, I'm sorry. So, someone could put up, say, a 2,000 or 3,000-square-foot Morton building back here?
Right, yes, ma'am.
As long as it wasn't a dwelling, it doesn't have to meet the same size limit as...
Right, so the size limit for the accessory dwelling unit is specific to the dwelling unit, not the, not just a general accessory structure.
Yeah, so that's, but my question is, by ordinance, aren't you limited to one accessory structure in the back?
You're limited to one accessory dwelling unit, but you can have more than one accessory structure in the rear yard.
Yeah, I've seen several places where they have multiple garages and sheds and whatnot, but, so the size doesn't matter if, unless it's, less than until it's a living space, then we have to keep it under the 1,000.
Yes.
Okay.
As I touched on, there's a mix of zoning in the surrounding area. So, you've got the residential R2, which extends largely to the north and the west there, but then you've got central, or, sorry, neighborhood commercial to the south of the parcel. Again, in terms of scale, you've got about a 4,000-square-foot office building on that parcel, and then across the street, you've got industrial zoning, another, I believe most of those are also office uses. In terms of the request, as it fits into the comprehensive plan, there's a few sections that would come into play. The property's in the traditional neighborhood character area, which encourages a mix of housing types, with an emphasis on maintaining compatible form. The property has a medium-density residential future land use designation, which calls for density of up to 12 units per acre. And finally, we have a housing strategies section, which includes a recommendation to allow for development of accessory units in traditional and suburban neighborhoods to provide for extended family or rental units within neighborhoods. So, based on the introduction at the work session, we have added or edited a few of the draft conditions. I'll run through them all, but the emphasis being on, so, there's now a condition that says the accessory dwelling unit, off-street parking and access aisle shall be constructed in general conformance with the application packet. This sort of ties, if approved, this would tie to, you know, what's been presented and reviewed by you all, just kind of an extra surety that we're generally following that plan. Secondly, the ADU shall be the only accessory dwelling unit permitted on the lot. The lot containing the primary residence and accessory dwelling unit should not be less than 10,000 square feet. The floor area of the accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 1,000 square feet. Minimum separation of 15 feet must be maintained between the primary and accessory dwelling units. The unit shall not have more than two bedrooms. The unit shall not have more than one bathroom. Shall not have more than one kitchen. Shall not have more than two occupants. The accessory dwelling unit shall be architecturally compatible with its surroundings and provide quality architecture and building materials. This is another new condition. The existing gravel parking area in front of the home shall be reduced to cover no more than 25% of the front yard. The remaining parking area shall be paved. Again, this will bring that front yard parking space up to code standards. Number 12, the accessory dwelling unit shall have at least two off-street paved parking spaces available. And then I've added this one, the drive aisle leading to the spaces shall be paved at a minimum of nine feet in width. And finally, we have the public water and wastewater facility shall be extended from the primary dwelling service. No separate meter is permitted. So, that's what I've got. The applicant, Mr. Mendez, is here tonight, if he had any questions that he may be able to answer, and I'm happy to try to clarify anything I've presented.
If you go back to the plan view, where you show the house, accessory unit, all the paving?
Oh, yes, sir.
Way up front. Yeah, right there. It doesn't look like you're going to have anything paved to the entrance to the garage.
So, at this point, it kind of defaults to the same, where the, for the, from a zoning standpoint, we would have to treat the garage on its own merit. It would really be up to them if they want to count that parking as the two spaces, in which case they would need to extend the...
In the front of that garage, you're going to have a door that lifts up where you can drive into the garage. Looks like you've got nothing to lead into that.
Mr. Seario? I believe the applicant will address that during his time.
The concern I have is, in the last thing, you said it's going to, what we show here for the paving is what's required. If you don't show it paved going up to the garage door, then they don't have to do it.
So, as, at least my interpretation is, the two off-street parking spaces for the dwelling unit are what are being shown as the, kind of the surface lot. I would see it as they have the option to, if they're counting the garage as those two spaces, I would say that would be a condition of the conditional use permit. Otherwise, I would say that defaults to just the zoning permit that they would apply for. We would have to look at the parking for the garage at that point.
I'm not looking at parking, just entrance to the garage.
I think, let's get to the public hearing and let the applicant address.
Can you go back to the picture where it shows the garage entrance on the picture? Yeah, so basically...
Hold on one second, if you would.
Hold on, I have a couple of questions. Go ahead, if I may.
Can we finish? I have him finish what he's going to say.
Well, why don't we?
We've got to open the public hearing.
Actually, we shouldn't interrogate him during the public hearing.
All right, let's see if there's been any public comments first, or whatever.
Can I ask the department a question before we... What's the overall lot size, please?
So, it's .33 acres, which I think is just below...
It's 14,375.
Oh.
14,375.
I want to say something about the sketch that we've been looking at, but I'm not sure if this is the right time, or if I should wait till after the public hearing.
If it's a discussion item, I would recommend holding it.
I'll sit on my hands then.
Just point of order, all of these questions for staff can happen after the public hearing. Okay.
You're done with your presentation?
I am, yes, sir.
The applicant will open the public hearing.
Jared, if you wouldn't mind just going to the image of the actual unit, I think the applicant was going to make a reference to that.
Yeah, afternoon.
If you would just state your name and...
My name is Omar Mendez, and I'm applying for the accessory dwelling unit. So, one of the things is, like, that door is supposed to be on the, I want to say, can you go to the next slide, please? Yeah, it's going to be like right in front of the parking space. I mean, that's not like exactly how it's going to look. So, basically, the garage door is going to be on the right side.
Essentially, the garage, the paved area is going to run up to the garage door.
Oh, I have no problem with that. But then you're out of proportion there on the drawing, because it should be going this way, not this way.
I was just trying to just keep it kind of like, just clean, but I can actually add the other portion of it, in many ways, that's...
Oh, could you go back one?
Yeah, I don't think that drawing's really too skewed.
Okay, so, it's going to be on the, it's going to look just like that, but it's going to be on the side instead of the front.
Correct, on the side, correct.
Gotcha, I understand.
I was using that picture as a reference.
Understand.
How it's going to look, yep.
Okay. Then, I have no problem with it.
All right, perfect.
Do you have any other, as I said, do you have any other comments first? I did a, sorry, I did have one question for you. What is your timeline?
Well, I mean, if it gets approved, I mean, probably now, since it's going to start getting colder, I mean, probably start working probably next year. Because, I mean, winter time, and it's going to be...
Yeah, I just want to make sure there wasn't any immediate...
No, 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 I got time, so, probably maybe February timeframe, maybe.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead and close the public hearing.
Well, before you do that, did we have any, I know we sent letters out to neighbors, did we have, did we hear anything that needs to be brought up?
We did not receive any public comment back from the mailings.
There is no correspondence.
There was no correspondence received.
Thank you. All right, we're done with that.
So, now we can ask questions as staff.
I've always got a list.
Yeah.
Well, I have a question about the sketch that we've been looking at. The department was good enough to provide a GIS picture with an approximate
I like this one.
proportion footprint, actual size footprint, to-scale footprint of the accessory dwelling unit versus the house. In this sketch, I know, we can't all be professional graphic artists, but it's pretty far, it's pretty far away from what I see in the GIS product. The accessory dwelling unit plus garage in this sketch is much smaller than the main house, whereas in reality, it's larger than the main house. It's about 50% larger than the main house. And this sketch shows some, looks like a representation of some order of trees or some landscaping around the edge, and I'm curious, I can't tell, it doesn't look like there's any space to, it doesn't even look like there's a setback, enough room there for a setback. So, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that I'm confused, I'm a little confused about the information we're being offered to, you know, use in making this decision. So, that's what I want to say.
In the past, on other accessory dwelling structures, I believe, all of them have provided us with engineered plans. By a professional engineer, where the boundaries were set, the distances from the property line to the accessory dwelling structures, the width of the existing lot, particular items that are...
If I could, if I could address the chair, Town Ordinance 27-262-D, exempts this applicant from a site plan, but it does require a scaled sketch. So, this would work if it was to scale.
What the scale is in...
I think we just have, I mean, we could just have the applicant redraw it.
Right.
I mean, just makes, to me, sending this up to council, it makes sense that the picture look like the, what it's supposed to look like, or what it's going, the finished product will look like.
Rehold hard and play it head, because what we have, and then the other thing that we've been looking at, or, it's hard to believe, it looks like it'll fit, but then you look at what's on here, which may or may not be scaled, is not, it's not going to be the same product.
I have a question, if it pleases the chair, another question just in terms of paving. The, I'm just wondering if 27-207C3 would provide an exemption for some of these surface paving requirements?
Sorry, 27?
27-207, and then a C3. I mean, it'd be nice not to have to pave 10% of the lot just to get this accessory unit in it. Like in the, you know, climate change world we live in.
Right.
Most of the driveways are already gravelled.
The difficulty is that while in C3A, it does list sort of the addition of an accessory structure as being eligible for the exemption, the requirement specifically in the conditional use permit standards for accessory dwelling units requires paved off-street parking.
Right, but if the garage, let's just say that the, we're not going to tell the applicant what they can do, right? We're just telling them here that they get a conditional permit to build this building. If the applicant tells us that their paved off-street parking is located inside that garage, then how do we, how do we, what control do we have over how to get there?
The control is that it's also addressing an existing unsighted violation currently, because the applicant expanded the gravel in the front yard without permission, and off-street parking in town is required to be paved, whether it be new or...
So, but if he went out, let's just say, reduce the gravel to 25% of the front yard today, put something else in, he would be compliant?
His, it's difficult at this stage, because we'd have to, it's beholden on the applicant to identify his non-conforming status, so he'd have to be able to prove what was gravel parking previously. Because parking, off-street parking is required to be paved, is what we're at currently, and I recognize that there are existing ones.
He can go to Google Earth, though, and get a picture that's two years old and do it.
He could conceivably do that, yes.
So, and then my question is, it's interesting, because the whole street is very interesting, right? Because you're talking about R2, where your minimum widths are 100 feet, but none of these, of course, conformed to that. They're all sort of grandfathered in. They're all sort of grandfathered in. And that's what caused a sort of conflict with why he couldn't just build a second house. Theoretically, with R two, he could build up to three, I think, here, without that, you know, sort of. So, I guess, the question then just sort of becomes, when do we, I mean, would this whole lot technically be non-conforming? Or, or is that just, or are these all conditions that are sort of grandfathered into these lots?
In terms of, as far as the width goes?
I mean, when the house was built, he did, he was not required to have asphalt driveway.
Right, and that's, that's where, if he were not increasing the parking required there, he would not be required to bring it up to code, so to speak. It's because essentially he's creating, he's, he's doing additional development on it, that where we're able to bring things up to code, there's, there's an expectation to do so. Because essentially, when you look at the non-conformities, there's a, it specifically states that there's a desire to remove those non-conformities, or at least reduce them to the extent possible when the opportunities present themselves.
And I, I may be mistaken, I'm thinking the, the lot width in R two is eighty, and I'm thinking this lot just.
This lot is fifty-one.
Okay.
Because you can't turn the auxiliary, you can't turn the structure sideways and fit it, so it's gotta be less than sixty-three. But again, none of this matters, I'm just, in fact, my, I mean, I have less concern with the structure than I do with making somebody spend tens of thousands of dollars to basically make the street hotter. Which is essentially what paving the driveway is gonna do. I did have one other, just sort of random question. Because the C, the structure next to it is C one, at some point, of course, you know, I mean, all of this stuff is grandfathered, that's the issue. But there should have been some screening or firming in between those uses. And I'm trying to figure out, could, could you, in some way, trade trees for asphalt? Or, you know, like, how do you get trees, you know, in between the C one and the R two?
Yeah, and that's where the difficulty is, because usually in those instances, the, the screening requirement is on the more intense use, which would be the commercial one, as opposed to the residential one. So it, it seems a little harsh and, and sort of that, that backwards thing to put the, the screening requirement on the residential side. That being said, that, that certainly could be contemplated, but I think there's a benefit to having this accessory structure on that southern side of the property, closer to the commercial. Where from a scale perspective, it's, it's not as imposing as it would be if it were up against the, the adjacent residential property on the other side. But I mean, it certainly could be argued by the commission that essentially if they did a limited paving in the front, essentially with capacity for two vehicles, that that would meet the requirement for the paved off-street parking for the accessory dwelling unit. And allow the existing gravel parking to serve essentially as the park, as the necessary parking for the, the main dwelling. Where it gets a little trickier is that you're essentially running, because tied in with the accessory structure is a garage, it's hard to justify not paving to that garage. Now, I, they, they show essentially additional paving in that front portion, which I think we could make the argument to, to, to do away with in front of the building. And essentially, I potentially just pave the path back to the garage, and between that path and the garage, you've got the necessary paved off-street parking for the accessory dwelling. But I think you'd struggle to, to do less than that.
What is the town's definition of paving?
It's, it is.
Six inches of twenty-one A and two inches of asphalt on top of it.
Stuck, crushed and ruined in asphalt, so definitely impervious and definitely gonna shed water.
But then, on the bright side, the lot, the way the lot is laid out, the water's not, doesn't look like it's gonna run into the neighbor's house. I mean, at least, the, the, like, without a site plan, by eye, it looks pretty.
And, and I mean, from an E and S perspective, gravel is treated as impervious as well, because it becomes compounded, compacted, and, and so from a runoff perspective, should behave very similarly.
But you still have to have the two inches of asphalt for it to be paved according to the town standard.
Correct.
I have, if it's, I have one other question for the applicant, if that.
That's fine.
Okay, I mean.
Definitely.
Do you have any concerns or issues with paving everything they're asking you to bid?
Uh, no, not really.
Okay, so asphalt's okay with you?
Yeah, now that I do have a question about that, does it have to be asphalt or it can be concrete? So that's one of the.
There, there, there's different standards of, of ways it can be done, I'd have to look in terms of the specifics of the concrete, whether it could be done that way.
I think there are more options for residential than commercial, but.
There's greater flexibility there for sure, because again, the vehicle, the volume of traffic and then the wear and tear, and it's gonna be much less for a residential one.
Okay.
So we, we can certainly look at that, pull, pull what the options are and then coordinate that with you.
Yeah, 'cause that's one of the things, I was talking to the guy who's gonna be doing the concrete, like the concrete slab and all that stuff, and he's like, yeah, why don't you do the, the whole thing, concrete, instead of like getting paved? But like I said, that's, I'm just.
I mean, the reason why it doesn't come up is it's more expensive usually.
Oh, no, yeah. I know, I'm just kinda, yeah. And that's the other, so now, my other question is, can it be like half and half, or it has to be like the same? Like, what, what I mean, like gravel, one side and the other one is supposed to be paved, or it has to be like the entire length?
I, I think the entire length to the garage would need to be, and it, it, again, it could be paved either with a mix of concrete and asphalt. But, but you wouldn't be able to do gravel for that access. Again, if you had that little strip in front of the actual house, that, that offshoot, that could essentially remain gravel.
Okay.
If, if, if the planning commission were comfortable with that and ultimately town council. But, but the path back to, to the garage itself would need to be paved or concrete, asphalt or concrete.
Okay.
Yeah, as these conditions exist now, right, what we just saw.
Right.
Yeah, it would have to be concrete or asphalt.
Gotcha, okay. Any other question?
No, but thank you.
Any other discussion? Your motion. So the motion would be to, go ahead.
I was gonna say, but we discussed getting sort of a cleaner, more accurate looking scale.
To scale, yeah.
Do we want to?
This is very out of scale.
So just add that as another condition, that the applicant will provide a scaled sketch?
I'd like to see it before I, before I send it to council.
The applicant has indicated that as long as we don't drag things out until next year, that it's, he's not harmed by some modest delay just to get the paperwork. So everybody's comfortable passing it up, making a recommendation to the council. It wouldn't take very long to do that, I imagine. So we could postpone deliberation, or postpone a vote until a future meeting, without harming the applicant.
Hey, there's a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
We voted aye.
Postponing.
To table.
Table it till next meeting.
Understand.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
This is gonna be made to scale, in other words.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if, if it pleases the planning commission, because this is not substantially changing the application, I don't plan to re-advertise the public hearing. I think this is essentially just a clarification of the information, as opposed to any new information coming forward.
Very good. So we'll move on to other business?
The issue, the question of minutes had come up, and again, I, I wish to apologize to the commission that we don't have minutes. We, we did have the issue of staffing, some shortages, Ms. Purrier was out for a month, and we've been down a staff member now for, coming up on a month. I've spoken with Ms. Purrier, we, we've got as a priority moving forward to get the minutes, so that we're at a stage where we, we don't run more than a month behind. So ideally, at, at the subsequent meeting, we do have the minutes coming up. What that may mean is that the, the minutes may be a little bit briefer than, than what we have seen during her time, because she's been very diligent about, very comprehensive minutes. And I think, just the time, the trade-off of the time commitment to, to developing the minutes in those manner has, has proven to be a little, to, to cause us to fall a little bit behind. So, we'll go for a little bit more brevity in the minutes, but have them in a little bit more timely manner.
And we're not the only.
We are not the only ABC that she is, she's working on, which makes it tricky, where there's, there's five different ones that she's balancing, so.
Very good, all right, any follow-up items?
Am I allowed in other business to make a statement that's not a motion, or is that out of order?
Does it pertain to the discussion of minutes?
No.
Then you could probably wait till planning commission discussion.
I will do that.
Hey, any follow-up items?
We got a sharp parliamentarian here.
There's a reason.
No, Mr. Chairman, no follow-up items.
Okay, planning director updates?
Nothing at this time, other than to, to say I do anticipate us having a work session next week. We've got a zoning amendment coming through, the, the council initiated at, at two property owners' request, an amendment to the parking overlay district. So we'll be discussing that at the work session in anticipation of a public hearing next month.
Will the planning schedule, or I'm not sure what we're calling it now, the planner, will this be updated and available to discuss at the working meeting?
Yes, and, but probably not in that format, you missed, last month, we did the, the demonstration of the online virtual, online version of it. So I'll, I'll bring that back, and we're gonna look to, I think, I'll distribute that, that link in advance of the meeting as well to the commission.
And are there updates with respect to, not asking you to go through them now, but if they're gonna be in there, just look at it next meeting. But will there be updates with respect to the status of the zoning ordinance overhaul and also the comprehensive plan revision?
Can certainly discuss those and, and identify, in terms of, the short answer is there's very little up in the way of, of update on those. The, the zoning ordinance, where I'm anticipating having a draft out hopefully at the end of this year for comment and review. But the, the comprehensive plans, essentially, we, we've got on hold until after we get through the zoning.
And also get your staff, get staffed up.
That, that would help.
Get a shot in the arm, okay.
That would help.
Thanks.
Anything else, Mr. Director?
That's it for me, unless the commission has any questions of me.
All right, moving on to commission member discussion, we'll just start with Mr. Sirianni. Mr. Chris Simmons?
This is our first meeting with Mr. Mitchell, sitting on the other side of the table here, and I just wanna take the opportunity to say what a privilege it's been to serve with him. He brings an intelligence, a kind of lateral thinking, a breadth of intelligence and an imagination and sense of creativity to the process that I'm not capable of. And in the eight years I've served on the board, I haven't run into anybody else with his particular skill sets. I felt that he made us stronger as a body, benefited from his participation. And I know that he will continue to be a friend of the, the town and the commission, even if he's working from that side of the table instead of this one. Just wanna say how grateful I am to have had the opportunity to serve together with him. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell? I have nothing further to add.
No, I don't think I do either, thank you, Jeffrey, and thank you, Ian, as well, for your service as the chair of this, this body. Fantastic job.
I have big footprints to fill. I have two former chairs sitting here right now.
Yeah, actually, I lied, I forgot to welcome Mr. Clemens to the, to the dais. And certainly will, will benefit from your years as being a four-year chairman on the, the planning commission in your five years, as well as, as Mr. Mitchell chooses to, graces with his presence and insights as well.
Yeah, so just for my two minutes, I just wanted to say I'm happy to be back and looking forward to serving as best I can. The, I did have one random thought that came up when I was reviewing for this. Do we have any, is there a way for us to get a badge or any kind of something that would identify us as planning commissioners? So that if I'm basically on a prop, you know, or near a property, someone can know why I'm there.
We'll have to look, I don't know that we can get a badge per se. We may be able, because you are, as planning commissioners, are technically town employees, we may be able to get the vests that Public Works utilizes, that state town of Culpeper, the bright yellow ones.
I just think in this day and age, something that identifies why we're on a property. And by code, of course, we're allowed to be on that property if we need to be.
You don't wanna get shot, huh?
And you guys, are you issued ID badges now? So, is that what you meant by badge?
Yeah, just something where I can identify myself if somebody asks what I'm doing somewhere.
Let, I'll, I'll look into see what we can do, as I said, at the very least, I'm pretty sure we can do the, the orange vests, or the yellow, the bright yellow vests, but we'll see.
County does, does give out badges to all their members of all the committees. I don't, I don't know if they would do it for us, say the town or something.
Right.
Skirt around the perimeter, I don't like to go on any property regardless of whether I've got flashing lights.
That looks much less shady.
Well, you know, standing back, or, or driving around the block and seeing things from angles, that's what I'm talking about.
Even if you park, the cops might come up, tell, what are you doing?
We need a domino sign that just says planning commission on top of the car.
Yeah, that would, that wouldn't last very long either. Where did you get that? Anyone else would, to add anything, Mr. Director?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I believe we have a member of the public who may have missed public comment. And so if there's any indulgence from the commission to potentially grant an opportunity to speak, I think there, there is a, a request to do so. So I defer to the commission if there's a willingness to, to amend the agenda to, to allow a, a, a second or a later public comment.
Well, my show, favorite show doesn't start till eight, so we certainly will allow it, I will reopen the public hearing.
Not, not the public hearing, it's just public comment.
Public comment, please come forward.
My name is Elizabeth Peterson Tappy, I'm a seventh grader at CMS. I'm a travel volleyball player in Warrington and played at the Field House this summer. The reason for my visit is I was very sad when I saw that the county had took away the beach volleyball court at the Yow Meadow Park. For the Bill of Rights, the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence. The monument are very important to our country's history, but it is also important for the kids who don't have the money to pay to play at the Field House. Another important detail is that the, is that volleyball is just as important as the baseball field, basketball court and skate park. Now, most of these parks or courts are played by boys or men. You don't see many women or girls playing in those areas. So I did some research and I built a new one, or had an idea that it can go between the basketball court and the baseball field. It would cost about three thousand dollars to install a new one, thank you so much for your time.
Well said. As I understand, it was more related to the, the sand and the flooding, and, and sort of the, the issues that caused with it getting washed out. And then the other issues that we, we face at Yow Meadow Park in terms of the goose feces in the, the area. It's something that has come up, and we've got a Parks and Rec commission who are contemplating these sorts of things as well. We've got a new park that we're looking to construct at, at Lakeview. And so one of the things that we're gonna be talking about is the potential of volleyball courts there, just so that they, they are available, because there is, is a demand for them. But it's just finding the right place where there's not these other adverse impacts. Yow Meadow Park unfortunately is being largely in the flood plain, when we get the floods come through, it can do a whole lot of damage to, to, to what's there. And so we just wanna be smart with where we put them.
Also, Rockwater Park has a lot of space up there, twenty-two acres, that could be another alternative.
It does, the tricky thing with Rockwater is the terrain.
A lot of rocks.
A lot of rocks and a lot of sort of rolling hills there.
Andrew, just so everyone in the room knows, when, when will the Parks and Rec committee be meeting next?
They normally meet the last Monday of each month, they're not meeting next week, though, we didn't have the items, and so we ended up canceling that one. But we are anticipating meeting, I think it's October thirtieth, and that's five PM in this room. But if you wanna get me that, the statement that you had, I'm happy to, to, to include it in their packet so that they can have that statement.
Do you have an idea when the Lakeview Park will be started?
We have not got an anticipated date to actually start construction, we're in the, in the park planning phase at the moment, having the conversations there about what's going.
When will planning be done, I guess, that may be a start.
I believe in the CIP, we have identified for this fiscal year for the planning and potential construction to start in the next fiscal year.
Oh, okay. That's a big area there.
It is.
It's gonna be nice.
It is.
I understand you're gonna have restrooms there, too.
Yep, that's, that's planned.
That's also in the floodplain.
I don't believe that's actually in the floodplain, it's in the dam inundation zone.
So it's the overflow?
It's the overflow, but, but it's, well, it's the dam failure area.
Yeah, but you have.
But that's not gonna happen after twenty-five million dollars, dam's not gonna fail.
Not today.
Not in our lifetime, let's.
Those townhouses will be complaining if that place floods, because they'll flood too.
We just gotta catch up, in the meantime, we're, what, two feet below the spillway, so we've got a ways to go before we're gonna.
They've already added a lot of rock. There's an underground power line seventeen, eighteen feet deep. But it's been abandoned. Alright, if there's no other discussion?
Motion for a chairman.
So moved.